Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 12, 2022, to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to here this morning. We'll begin our meeting by asking Dennis Childers with God's Kitchen to come forward to give our invocation, and then Commissioner Harvey will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Father, first of all, we praise your name that we live in a country where we can actually pray before a meeting. And Father, I pray as we have the meeting today that your guidance will go through. People make decisions based on the people and what the people need. Father, I pray as this meeting continues that it'll continue in peace. But Father, we thank you for the controversy that we're allowed to have in our country, where we can have other opinions and agree to disagree. Father, help our leaders. We pray for this government here. We pray for our city government. We pray for our state government. We pray for our federal government. Father, as they try to lead our country, Father, I will be done. Bless this state, Father, and thank you for what you've given this county, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Show me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Childers, and thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioners, Commissioner Rawls texted me this morning, and he's not feeling well. He's going to try to make our two o'clock meeting, and we'll just wait for Commissioner Adams. We do have a quorum with three, I believe, so we'll continue to move forward. Okay, Commissioner, the first item of business is approval of amendments as presented?
Move approval.
Okay, good. Proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if there's seeing aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move into our recess, the Board of County Commission meeting, and I'll convene the Port Authority meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the amendments stated in our agenda.
Okay, got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Turner. All in favor, and if there's saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We'll open up for public comment. At this time, any individuals wishing to make public comment on Port Authority items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and go down to general discussion. Commissioners, any general discussion or topics?
I have none.
Okay, seeing none, I'll adjourn the Port Authority, and I'll reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we'll move down to presentations and ask the Honorable Lynda Myers to come forward for homeowners assistance fund information. It's two weeks, two meetings in a row, so we're lucky to have you. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for that. I'm not sure everyone agrees with that, but thank you. I don't intend to make this a habit. Tuesday mornings, nine o'clock, I have other things to do. But this program came up to our attention literally last week. Now, it's been around for quite a while, so everyone has this packet. You'll need, I believe our packets are identical. I hope so. The first page says HORN, and it just refers to the legislation that this falls under. And we've all heard about these ARPA funds in different categories. This one specifically is for homeowners assistance. As I said, we were totally unaware until we received this letter and a check. So someone in our county became aware of this and applied for the funds to pay their delinquent 2021 taxes. So we started Googling, is that a verb now? HORN and HAF, and found all of the information in your packet. At that point, I reached out to, tax collectors have different tax collectors who specialize in areas. Gadsden County, Dale Summers, tax collector there, reached out to Department of Revenue and said, what do you know about this program? And the comment was, well, DEO is managing it, and they're going to reach out to you guys soon. So obviously, this is already on the airwaves, but we knew nothing about it. So we have a tentative meeting on Thursday with DEO and the Department of Revenue, because Department of Revenue is the oversight for the property taxes. So we have a tentative meeting set up on Thursday to look at how this is going to be implemented. But as you can tell, originally, if you go to frequently asked questions page, on page, the backside of that, what I want to stress is, who can do this? There's only three criteria. They are, must have experienced a financial hardship due to COVID. Now, it could have been before COVID, but it had to continue during COVID, and the dates are on that. Must be a Florida homeowner requesting assistance for primary residence. So some people said to me, well, why didn't they just say homestead? Because quite honestly, we have a lot of folks who don't even understand they could homestead their property. So I'm really appreciative that they made this broader. We sometimes have folks come in who are, find themselves in terrible situations, can't pay their taxes, and we review them. They've lived there for 10 years, and they've never homesteaded. As you know, that's such a benefit to them. So we, of course, get with Tim Parker's office, and we get that organized. But I love that they made this broad enough to include those folks, because in fact, those are the people perhaps who need this the most. And the third criteria is you have to meet an income need level. So as I read it, it's just rather interesting. 150 or 100% of the median income of the United States, or your area median income, whichever is larger. So it's unusual for something to say whichever is larger. Usually, it's whichever is less. So this is a real boon for Putnam County, because I'll speak to those levels next. In Putnam County, those levels are below, as you can imagine, the US median income. So 100%, it's your page, do you have, oh, yours is later, I believe. I'm so sorry. I put these in the way I was going to speak. There is a chart in there that indicates from one person to eight people in your household, your income can be up to $90,000, and you still qualify in Tier One. Tier One will be funded before any other tiers will be funded. And then in Tier Two, you will see in the chart that it actually starts at 90,000, but it increases because a family of eight in Putnam County. Now you switch to Putnam County's AMI. So it's a complicated formula, but however saying that most of our community who qualify will be in that eight-person household or less and make less than 90,000. So according to the statistics that accompanied this in the guidelines, they approximate that we will have 20,000 individuals in Putnam County who qualify. The data, that estimate for target population is based on mortgage information, census tract income, and zip code information. So that's a huge percentage of our community. So you'll see in your packet, there's a lot of frequently asked questions, including in there, there's this document checklist. I wanted to bring this up, although I'm here just to speak about property taxes. These funds can be used for mortgage payments, utility payments, believe it or not, internet service payments, property tax payments, insurance payments, and HOAs. So it's very broad, but I do want to focus on that 20,400-some folks in Putnam County they estimate is their target group. Statewide, the target group was 5 million homes. Now, in your packet, and I actually have these for anybody here who wants these, please take them. It's just a brief understanding of, it's a very simple process, to tell you the truth. And this page really describes it very easily. The problem is, it's all online. It's all online. So I've spoken with Stella Brown with the libraries, and of course, as you know, in all of our communities, the libraries have computers. Many of these folks won't have computers, and maybe they use their phone for digital, but this is a little complicated to do on your phone screen. I actually don't even know if there is an app. Every time I looked at it, I looked on the computer. But it's a simple process. However, you have to have a computer, and you also have to know how to do a few things on a computer. So Stella Brown with the libraries has agreed to make sure that all of their folks are aware of this program, so when people come in asking for the homeowners assistance, they'll know how to help them get started. So just to reiterate, this is not reimbursable. So if you paid your 2021 taxes, you can't be paid back with this money. If your 2021 are sitting in delinquency right now, these funds can pull it out of delinquency, which is just an amazing opportunity. I know Commissioner Rawls at the last meeting asked me, how many folks, did it look like collections were down? In reality, they were not. Does it mean on an individual basis, we don't have folks that come in and say, I've never been here before, what do I do? What does this mean? You sold, you sold my house? No, sir. It was a tax certificate lien. It's an interest-bearing lien. It doesn't give ownership. So we have people every day who come in who are in delinquent status. So this can be used, and that's how the one check we received last week, it was designed to pay a delinquent. That's pretty straightforward. It's pretty simple. But the legislation or the federal package, this is federal package going through DEO, and they've contracted with H O R N E, Horn, as the company that will be implementing. Delinquent taxes is straightforward. This can also be used to pay 2022 taxes. The bills, the bills aren't even out. As you all know, they come out on or before November 1. But this legislation allows them to pay the 2022 taxes. That's a little more complicated. And so we actually have a draft opinion that was sent from DEO, and this is what they're going to meet on on Thursday. And I've gone through their draft suggestions and made my suggestions on how much of a nightmare this potentially can be unless they understand how our systems work and let us help design how to pay the 2022 in advance. Because, you know, we have that going. We have people that pay taxes in advance in their installment programs. So it's an easy function, but not the way they wrote it, because they don't know how the system works. And I know all of us have been in a situation where somebody wrote the rules and has no idea how the system works. So hopefully, we'll be doing a little fine tuning on this on Thursday, because I know this is of great interest to folks who are going to face that 2022 bill in November and not know what to do with it. So I know if somebody wants to ask me, what about installment payments? People are already paying it. I don't know the answer. That's one of the questions, they don't deal with that. That's one of the questions we need to say to DEO. It's a little more complicated than you understand, and there's 67 counties. So let's work this out. So I don't know the answer to that. I would assume they qualify, but we don't know how to make that work. So I look forward to more information to you all later on the 2022. Not a hurry for that, more a hurry for our folks who are in delinquent status right now, for them to be aware. These funds are there. They're simple. You apply, and either they say yes, or they say no. There is an appeals process if they say no. With that, I believe I've covered this amazing topic. You know, I like to say sliced bread a lot. This is better than sliced bread.
All right, thank you.
My other statement that you all don't know is if the federal government gives you a break, take it. This is one of those breaks. We all need to know that we have 20,000 people potentially in our community who qualify for this, so we need to share that. And that's why I gave all of you the big packet, so you can talk to people. I know you get these phone calls. What am I going to do? So hopefully, you'll have the information. If you need more from us, please let us know, and direct them to libraries if they don't have access to computers, or a teenage kid to help them.
All right. Okay. All right, Lynda, thank you. Commissioner Harvey, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable Myers, let me ask you a couple of questions-
Please.
-that maybe you can ask on Thursday when you have your meeting.
Yes, sir.
What is, I think we need clarity on what's an experienced financial hardship. I think that needs to be cleared up.
That I'm sure is defined by the federal government ARPA funds.
Okay.
I think when you, I looked at the registration, I put my stuff in, I looked at the registration, put my name in, and the question is, how are you impacted? And it's just a little, you write a little paragraph or a sentence, how you were. Now, I'm guessing that they will be looking at that and saying, I mean, some of them are obvious. You lost your job, you've been out of work. The school's closed. You were out of work because you had no daycare. I mean, some of those are obvious. Are there more that are not quite as obvious? I'm sure. I'm sure. But I think you're right. We'll make sure to ask them that, Commissioner Harvey.
And my second question is-
Say, can you help us? Because that's a stumbling block for folks. They don't know, and they don't want to do this if they don't qualify.
Right.
But again, it's a simple step. It really, I don't think it takes five minutes once you're on the computer.
My second question is, how much money is DEO holding in the state of Florida from federal government?
600 and some, 670 million.
Okay. So almost a million per county, if you look at it like that.
Yes, you could. And also, the maximum in the frequently asked question-
You said 670 million. That would be a lot more, that'd be-
It is, actually, now that you've done that math.
Ten million dollars per county, almost.
But-
There are 67 counties, so if you-
Divide that in there, there's a lot of money. 100 million?
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Lynda. Those are, Ms. Myers, excuse me. The, I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure if it would, if you would know the answer to this or not. First, I'd like to ask that we get Sam Sullivan involved in this. He's our grants guy and what have you.
We've talked, Sam and I.
Him try and find out, you know, what's going on. And I'd like to know things as such as could, does any portion of this, like when the CARES money came out a while back, they actually, you could use part of the CARES money to get an outside person to help with this, because obviously, if this really catches on, it'll take somebody a lot of time to do it. So-
I see.
And I think before, we used United Way to do some of our CARES distributions or whatever. So I was wondering if this allows for any of those fees to be paid, and could we get somebody to help us administer the program, or we could reach a lot more people? Because I agree with you 100%. This is a great program, it looks like. And at this point, we would just, if somebody was to ask about this, we would just ask them to contact the library, or, I mean, you don't want to be the front for this, do you? I mean, the front organization at this point, or?
We don't have access to computers for them. We don't mind answering questions. There are phone numbers on here, and there are like 10 sites. Is Sam here?
Yeah, he's back in the back corner, by the way.
Okay. So I love that you want to be proactive, because it's not just taxes. As you can see, it's a myriad of opportunities. So I'm going to suggest that we let Sam be the expert. I love being proactive.
I think that what we need to do is-
Thank you.
-get Sam involved for sure, because that's what he, part of what he does for us, for sure. But I don't know that he would be the absolute front man, but he could try to identify ways to make this work within the community by finding out, number one, could we be reimbursed by some, by this program if we set somebody else up to do it, like the United Way, or somebody similar, and get the program going? Because I'm with you. I think this is a great program, and so.
So let's take advantage. Let's get our 20,000.
Figure out the easiest way to make it work.
Thank you. I agree. And I'll chit chat with Sam on my way out.
Good deal.
Anybody else?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, is who's going to be the point person and who's going to take care of it? Because like with the CARES money, it took quite a team to try to, you know, distribute those funds and to get the applications and everything, so.
I do think that in general, this is designed a little bit like the PPP cabbage funds. It was simple, small business, just goes online. If you Google it, I told every small business person I know, Google cabbage PPP loans, and they had no problems making it work. I think the onus is trying to be put on the individuals, but commissioners, I think making sure that we have a point person that's spreading this information, and it is not difficult. It really just asks your name, why you think you qualify, and what your income is. And then it delves deeper. And if you look at the frequently asked questions, it talks about those things. What if it turns me down? What do I do next? And there's actually a 33-page guideline to filling out the online. And I say, don't go there. It's more complicated than going to the application.
Well, before, I think what we did was we actually had people lined up. The Chamber of Commerce had people that did it, helped with that one, and also the, like I mentioned earlier, the United Way helped with it also. And so if we could get agencies on board to help with some of this that are set up for this type of thing, it may be that we would just say, well, you need to contact so and so, and they will help you with your application. Quite frankly, if the instructions are 33 pages long, that's very difficult for a lot of people to try to figure out how to do it.
And that's why I would not go to that page. That's a separate little guideline for filling out the application. I literally, it took me less than five minutes to put my name in, my address in, why did you suffer from COVID, what's your income, how many people in your household. I don't believe there's more than 10 questions in the first application. However, I was speaking to, speaking with Lee from the Regional Council. That's another entity that has affordable housing issues, a committee. They may be interested in pursuing collaboratively with all their counties. But thank you for wanting to take this to the next level. We're probably not part of the next level, but we're certainly glad to be there whenever you need us.
Thank you.
Okay. Administrator Suggs, you want to make a comment before I go to Commissioner Adams, Zach?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you, Ms. Myers, for bringing this to us here this morning. And so commissioners, with your blessing, I think what we need to do before we continue figuring out what staff we want to get involved, I'd be more than happy to schedule some time to sit down with Ms. Myers and her team and go over the information that was provided here this morning, and see where we might want to go next, and how we might want the spearhead moving this thing forward for our citizens here in Putnam County.
If, because it's about that subject, if, once you get Sam on board with it, if that's what the next step needs to be, then that's fine. But I think that you're going to find that once he gets on board, he can come up with some solutions for us, or whatever.
I don't disagree with that. Let's sit down. I'll be more than happy to sit down with Ms. Myers, and let's go over this, and we can figure out what our, what our plan and what our process needs to be.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, speaking directly to Mr. Suggs, because we have this meeting with DOR and DEO on Thursday, why don't we try to set something up early next week, so we're on top of it, but maybe we have more information on the 2022 taxes that we can also discuss?
And that's fine. And if we can have someone to sit with it, sit on the Thursday meeting, it'd be even better, probably get some firsthand knowledge. So we'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I'm ready.
You're good? Okay. Okay, Ms.?
And to your questions, especially Commissioner Turner's, a friend of mine once said, ARPA funds are more difficult than they seem to get rid of. But it's worth, it's worth the work, right? Thank you again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move down to Presentations, Item B. Honorable Charles Overturf, Supervisor Elections. Want to talk to us a little bit about the redistricting and then the precinct changes that are coming, coming to us. So thank you, Charles.
Good morning, Chairman, and Commissioners, Administrative Staff, and Clerk and staff. I'm here today to sort of give you an update and a conclusion to the redistricting. You know, when we all met way back in the fall of last year, and you all started the process for the local part of it, I told you that it would be a long, long process, and it turned out to be a lot longer than we thought it would be due to a whole mess of court cases, and appeals, and stays, and things like that. So the congressional district was just given to us and finalized by the courts the first week of May. So that is what has taken us so long to try to get everything else in place, because we can't do one part, you know, without having it completed, the whole thing. So, and then we did get state senate seat and state house seats after the legislature met, and we were fortunate that the maps that they all, that they passed for the state were not challenged in court, which was a surprise to all of us. So that one, we got right at the first week of April, so we were able to start working on that. What I wanted to do today was to go through the state changes real quick, and then I'm going to finish up with the local stuff because of the way things were drawn, what changes we have to make here. First one is, you all knew we were in Congressional District Three. It used to be Ted Yoho's seat, one of our residents here in our county, and of course, he retired, and then Kamik got it, and then we were in her district for the last couple of years. The major change that happened in that was the governor's office and the legislature got involved. They passed different districts. You all know that the governor vetoed it. It went to court, and finally, like I said, the first week of May, they decided that the governor's map would be the one that we would undertake for this year. So that moves us south and east toward the ocean, so to speak. We are now in Congressional District Six, and the incumbent down there is Matt Walz. That, he will be on the ballot, because he does have, has drawn an opponent. So those of you that are registered Republicans will see that on the ballot here in about five weeks, as far as, so we have our say-so about that part of it. I will tell you, and just as a caveat, the courts have not 100% ruled that this is the way it's going to go. So I fully expect that sometime after the November election, it'll go back to court, and there's always the chance that someone will overturn that because of the way that the congressional district was drawn out of Jacksonville. Those of you that live here like I have all my life, you know that I call it the Corrine Brown district that used to run from Jacksonville all the way down to Orlando, and we were included. And then in 15 and 16, they said that was unconstitutional, and then they moved that district from Jacksonville all the way past Tallahassee. That district is the one that is now back up. The governor has made it more concise, but because of it, there is some racial connotations that it is a hindrance to minority representation. And so it won't surprise me if that one is readdressed. I'm not saying it'll be overturned, but there's a chance that come next year, we will be looking at redistricting again for- looking at redistricting again for congressional seats before the 2024 election. They won't have special elections, they would wait. So, just want to give you that as a heads up possibly. Moving to state senate, again, we got moved. We were with Keith Perry and had been for several years. We are now, have been moved eastward toward St. John's County. We're in District Seven and the incumbent there is Travis Hudson. Again, he has drawn an opponent, so he will also be on the ballot come in a few weeks. Let me go back on one thing, just to give you an idea, congressional districts are approximately 770,000 citizens. And of course, all of that comes from the census that we completed or the government did back in 2020. So, a congress seat is 770,000. A state senate seat is about 550,000 residents. So, you see, you know, and here we are at, I think Mr. Harvey gave it last night, about 73,000 or 74 in your, in your speech. So, you see, we're just a small rock in a big pond, so to speak, when you think about 770,000. And then you come down a little bit to the 541,000 and you say, okay, we're a little bit bigger, but still not a huge amount. But that'll be the district that we are in with Travis Hudson as the, the incumbent. The third one statewide, of course, is our House District. Again, we, the numbers changed. We still have Bobby Payne as our hometown representative. His district has now been renumbered to District 20 instead of 19. So, we of course have to let our voters know that part of it. His district is 100 and roughly 175,000. So, if we're, if we rounded our numbers off to 75,000, so we're a lot bigger in a part of the, the game, so to speak, in that one than we are in the other two. Just to give you an idea, his district includes all of Putnam County. It includes now part of Marion County, all the way down to, all the way through the forest and down to almost Silver Springs. Citra, Fort McCoy, all of that area is in his district. He used to have Union and Bradford County and of course, that all was taken away when they moved it. You go up to Clay County and it comes up through near Camp Blanding, almost to Middleburg. So, it is still north of Green Cove Springs. And then you come across the, to 16 into, to St. Clay, St. John's County. And then it comes down US One to the end of Flagler County and then back over to Putnam. So, it's a totally different geographical area than Representative Payne has, has been before. And he is also on the ballot, of course, in, in August here and does have a, an opponent. That particular one is a universal primary. So, in other words, the only two people running are both Republicans. So, that allows everybody that's a registered voter in all of those areas to vote. So, Republicans, Democrats, and independents. And again, that race will be over in August, so we'll know for sure who our representative is there. So, that's, that's mainly what we are as far as the statewide. I'm going to let Jennifer, I've got a couple of maps and I'll let her do, get that ready for us with the redistricting for Putnam County. Sorry, I said Matt and it should be Mike Walz, the representative. You all started working on this with the help of the consultants way back in September and October. And drew the districts the way you believed that they needed to be. As she's bringing this up, I'll go ahead and tell you what happened with the way that you all drew the districts. We have had to add three new precincts. Unfortunately, a county commission cannot, a precinct cannot be split by two county commissioners. And unfortunately, we, you did that in three different places. So, we do have three new precincts that have to be created. We were able to get rid of one out in Varden because of that polling, that precinct didn't need to be split. So, we reduced one. So, we've had a net gain of two precincts in the county. So, instead of 35 precincts, now we have 37. We did go ahead, since this is redistricting year, we did go ahead and renumber our precincts. So, Commissioner Pickens down on the far end won't see any changes in his because we always start at the south and move our way up. So, all the precincts matched up really well till we got to Ballstwick and Varden and then we started reducing precinct numbers. So, it'll go one through 37 in the county. So, it'll be a little bit easier for us to remember. She's got the map here and I'll let her pull up the first area that was changed and I think she's got the, the cursor on it for some reason. And you all have, I guess, a reason for it where you drew the lines, you see the different colored that that area was taken out of Larry Har, Commissioner Harvey's district and put into Paul Adamsak's. Again, we cannot split a precinct with two commissioners, so we have to create a brand new precinct down there. The negative about that is those are city of Interlaken residents. So, we now unfortunately have two city precincts that are in there. So, when we deal with their elections coming up here in November for mayor and commissioners and all, there's going to, there're going to be two different precincts that we're going to have to try to make sure they all understand. Just because I win one of them, I could lose the other one and still not win the election. So, that's what we've had to do. I will tell you that what we did was we kept the numbers together. So, in Interlaken, 18 and 19 are the two city precincts to help me remember and the voters out there remember. And then 20 and 21 are the, the precincts that have always been there. We are fortunate that because it's so close, we will be able to put a fourth precinct voting at the community center that you all helped us get several years ago, the Interlaken Community Center. And so, that's going to be a benefit that at least everybody will be still voting at the same place. It's just going to be, some of those residents are now, you know, in a different precinct, but they're still in the city limits there in Interlaken. So, that's again, one of the changes. Moving over here to the other two that we've added, both of these are here in town. Again, it was because of the way you all drew the maps that it again, split precincts. And so, we weren't able to do that. The one on the left here that you see where the cursor is, is out near the college. So, we've had to add a precinct out there again, because of taken away. And I don't remember exactly whose district was taken away and whose was added to it right there. But that was, you know, the reason for that. We're fortunate again, because it's right by the college, that we're going to be able to just let them go and vote. So, that means four precincts at the college, four at the community center in Interlaken. So, it just means more work for the staff and for my election workers and all, you know, as far as that's concerned. And then the fifth, the other one is the one down here on the bottom. And again, that's near the, the Rolling Hills area. And again, it was because of the way the map was drawn. So, we've had to again, add another precinct there and roughly in that area. So, those are the three that we have added. And like I said, then in Varden, instead of 14 and 15, we've been able to consolidate that and I think the new number out there is 13. So, so like I said, a net gain of two precincts overall. In the city of Palaka, to help keep up with it, because we'd always tried, I've always been able to say, city limits were our precincts, 35 through 39. Now, it's going to be 31 through 37 because of the adding of a couple of extra precincts. So, again, when we deal with city races, like we've got the mayor's race coming up here in just a few weeks, you know, we know that only those residents that live in those precincts are in the city limits and that those are the ones that, you know, will be able to, to vote for that particular race. Last area I'm going to mention is that we did have two polling locations that we have moved due to workers that we needed, we needed a lot of help with. I want to say first, a big thank you to administration, to emergency management. They have let us use the Satsuma Fire Department for several years down there. Our problem was that those bays are meant for fire trucks and stuff like that, not necessarily for air conditioning. And if you've been like I have on Election Day in August and you walk down there and you see the sweat coming down, those 14-hour days are long. So, we decided now was a good time to try. So, we're going to move around the corner about a mile to the Hope Lutheran Church. It's already been set up. We've already had a training down there and I think it's going to work really well. We've gotten with the sheriff and he's going to let us use two of his big signs to changeable the weekend before to again, let people know that we have moved. So, you know, anybody that lives down in that area, there is going to be a polling change, but it's only, like I said, about a mile away. The other one we had was also out at Hollister. And again, we use the fire department out there. And again, I, I thank them for their hospitality and their letting us use it. It was extremely small out there. If you look at the data from Hollister, those people, those voters like to vote on Election Day. They're what I call traditionalists. So, we decided, again, we needed to move because it's so small. We had one lady that fell. Luckily, it didn't hurt her too bad, but we've had some issues there. So, we're going up the road to Hoover Road. So, it's about a half a mile up the road and then turn right and go down to Dunham Woods Baptist Church. We've got a great facility there. The church wanted us, so we're moving both of these places. We thought it was a good time with redistricting and all to try to upgrade it. In Satsuma, I had several of the workers that said, either, either you move me or I have to quit because we can't take the physical conditions. So, that's why we did it. It's, you know, anytime you move, you're going to have some that don't like the move. But we did it because we think, felt like it's the best thing at this time. So, those are the redistricting changes. Like I said, it's not too much here in the county except for a couple of lines. You know, the, all the people will be, all the voters will be getting new cards the end of this week or the first day or so of next week. So, roughly 50,000. But we, as I told you all, the budget would only allow me to do it once. So, we wanted to wait till everything was finished. And so, I think we can say that at least to this point, we are. So, we'll be sending out notices to all of our voters that the numbers have changed and a couple of the locations have changed. So, with that, I think we're up to date as far as what we needed to do and you all needed to do as far as a board. So, I don't know if you have any questions or?
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Honorable Overturf for coming and Jennifer for being here too. The question I have on the Interlaken one, you're not, that new precinct is still going to be for the city of Interlaken, the town of Interlaken, not mixed with other non? So, so it's really the same number of people, it's just 37A or 37B, whatever that case may be, whatever the number is. So, it's, if you run, if the town council is running the, in the town of Interlaken, they're just going to go to two precincts to find voters instead of one, correct?
Exactly right. It'll be totally different because they've been used to one all these years.
Right.
And now we've got to add that second one because of the, the map drawing.
Right.
So, yeah, it'll, it'll, I just don't want somebody on Election Night, hey, I won that one precinct, I'm the new mayor. And then all of a sudden, it's not me because we've got to.
Well, it's not that many numbers.
No, no.
So, now the college one, that was used to having three and some of those numbers were pretty light on, on the college one. So, adding a fourth one, probably, it's still the same voters. It's just a matter of now you're going, you might have a precinct that lost a few, but you put them in the, they're all in the same spot voting is what I'm saying.
Right. And we're fortunate that those two areas, the college and Interlaken Community Center are some of our best locations.
Right.
Of any places they could handle the extra just because of facilities. Dr. Pickens and the college has reached out and been great with us and of course, Interlaken Community Center has been great. So, we were, we were blessed that if we had to add some, that those areas were the ones that we could change and it's not going to affect, it'll affect our workers a little bit because they've got to be careful of giving the right precinct ballot out to the right people.
Sure.
You know, that kind of thing. But those were the two areas that we could handle it and that's why we went on with it, you know, and, and put four and four when, like you said, normally it used to be three.
Well, I think this board, well, I know, I might, I don't think, worked very hard on getting those, the districts throughout the county pretty, pretty close to number, you know? So, I think that was a very good, I know it's a very good process that we went through and it took us, it wasn't that difficult, but, but we did come together and find how to get those numbers as close to humanly possible we could. And I think we did a outstanding job. So, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Charles, getting this information out to the public, what's the plan there? Is it?
As I said, in the next couple of days, we will send out the 50,000 voter information cards that will have polling changes, which will only affect a couple of the precincts. All of the numbers have all changed, so those will be done. We're also running, we'll be running ads in the paper, radio, every way, you know, Facebook, our website and stuff, you know? Again, trying to do it again, with the help of the sheriff. We'll have those changeable signs in Hollister and in Satsuma that will again, allow people to see it if they're, as they're driving by. So, we're going to do the best we can to try to get every, you know, out to the, the information out to the public, you know, to make sure that they, and if somebody has a question, we want them to call us and we'll say, no, you've, you know, been moved, you know, because there was the area down in Satsuma area that did switch because of the way that the map was drawn down there. So, there are some that are in a different precinct. It's probably not affecting their polling location as much, but it is their precinct number. So, we're going to again, do the best we can to, to get the word out so that everybody knows.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Charles. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, Commissioners, we'll move down to public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable that the, to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation on about matters on which the board received no prior information. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Or any, any individual wishing to make public comment on agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move down to the consent agenda. Commissioners, any items you would like to pull? Commissioner Adamsak?
D and E.
D and E? E was the second one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
And I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A, B, C, F, G, H, I, and J.
Second. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Item D, Commissioner Adamsak?
I'm just pulled for consistency's sake because I'll be voting no. I've already hashed out the reasons 50,000 times. So, there's no reason to continue that today.
Same on both Commissioners.
Ah, yes, sir.
So, I move that we approve D and E on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to approve D and E on the consent agenda by Commissioner Turner and a second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Three to one with Commissioner Adamsak dissenting.
If it was louder, does that count?
Yeah, give me two on that.
Okay, we'll move down to item seven, code enforcement. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Thomas Moore. We'll start with fine reduction request, code case 2010-00891.
The address is 143 Highliner Road. Property owner's name is Mad Assets. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. Original fine amount was $25,596.15 and the total cost of enforcement action was $4,976. The property owner has recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and is requesting the fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant here?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve staff recommendation of $4,976 of pay within 90 days.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to accept staff's recommendation to the reduction to four 976 of paid within 90 days. Got a proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, next code case, 2018-00416.
Address is 111 Davis Lake Road. Property owner's name is Athena Calvin and Amanda Bradshaw. The violation was unsafe structure.
Okay, next code case, two thousand eighteen zero zero four one six.
Address is one 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 Davis Lake Road. Property owner's name is Athena Calvin and Amanda Bradshaw. The violation was unsafe structure. The original fine amount was twelve thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Total fa- cost of enforcement actions of one thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and they're requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Okay, is the property owner here?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take staff recommendation of fourteen fifty-seven of pay within ninety days.
Second.
We've got a proper motion to reduce to fourteen? Fourteen fifty-seven for the page in ninety days. Proper motion and a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, we'll move down to item eight. Uh, Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have nothing to add this morning. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll go down to appointments. And I'd like to start, I'd like to appoint, this is a at-large position for Animal Control Advisory Board, Ms. Linda Gillen uh to that position, uh which is-
Nominate her.
I wanna nominate her. Yeah, can I, as chairman? So I'd like to nominate her to replace um Jenny Oakwood.
What's her name again, sir?
Linda Gillen, and she has filled out her application on-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Linda Gillum for the at-large animal services advisory.
I'll second it, but I don't think we've got to just nominate an at-large that doesn't need a second and then we just vote on the nomination.
Okay, we got a proper motion, um, all in favor. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, and if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, appointments. Commissioner Harvey?
I have none right now, sir.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none today, sir.
Commissioner Adams Act?
I have none today.
Okay, we'll move down to item ten, public comment on miscellaneous items. Uh, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the board will, will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board received no prior information. We please would like you to fill out a, a comment card, which is at the entrance and the exit of our board meeting uh room and then give them to Ashley over to my left, your right. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes. First speaker is Casey Williams. Welcome. If you can please state your name and address for the record, if you pull the microphone close to you and speak loudly into it.
There you go. Good morning. My name is Casey Williams. I live at one twenty-three North Beach Street, Palac, Florida, three two one seven seven. Um, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so good morning Commissioners. Um, my name is Casey Williams. I am president of All-Star Sports and Athletics here in Putnam County. We cater to the youth in the community, attempting to build up the youth through mentorship, sports, coaching, recreational activities, and environmental changes. Today, I come before you to honor one of your very own Commissioners. This Commissioner made it his business to promote the organization through sharing our activities online, commenting on our successes, and even contributing to the organization. This specific Commissioner is special to us because to believe in someone in the beginning before an organization has proven itself says so much about a person. There's an old saying that says, "People will meet you at the finish line, but they don't wanna run the race with you." It is with honor and appreciation that we present the certificate of appreciation to Paul Adams Act for his donation to the organization and his continued support to the youth of our community. Yes, you have to get it. And this bow, um, we had bow making yesterday, and the girls made the bow. You're very welcome, Paul.
But I don't get your picture, Paul, though.
Oh, I'm learning.
You owe me a picture, right? Thank y'all. That was it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, congratulations, Paul. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting. We'll move down to item eleven. Administrator Suggs, county administrator?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, county attorney, Rich Commando, welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Um, unfortunately, on Friday, I was scheduled for a court hearing this afternoon, so I will miss the workshop, but if there's anything you need to talk about, please let me know.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Adams Act.
Um, I just wanna say thank you to Colonel Wells and the sheriff for providing one of your, well, I guess he's a captain or, no, wait. I got it wrong, didn't I? Captain Miller um came out to Woodlawn Baptist Church, our Wednesday night group for, it's a small group. But uh, we try to do one quarterly thing on the fifth Wednesday of every month, where the children basically do an outreach for some charity or some group in the, in the community. Um, throughout the year, we've done uh several. But this past quarter, we chose to do, well, actually, it was pre-COVID. We actually collected um bears and and the like to try to give to the Sheriff's Department because when they uh have a child or something that's involved in a situation, whether it's a fire or a roadside thing or whatever, something to come for the child or or elderly person, you know, anyone that may need it. So they hand the bear over to the person. Um, the kids decided to draw up some banners and take up a collection of bears and uh we donated them to Captain Miller there a couple Wednesdays ago. So I just wanna say thank you for doing that for our community. I I know it's a godsend um to those that need it at the time that they're in a critical situation. And uh, thank you to the children in our church that uh participated in that. And hopefully, maybe this spreads that spirit throughout. Our next quarter, we're gonna be doing something at Camp Good News, but they don't know yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams Act. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple things today. Can y'all hear me with this microphone better?
Better.
Better, okay. My regular microphone is broke, so they gave me this one. Couple of things. Uh, one of them is, at some point, I think we're getting pretty close to having a a report on the uh possible uh addition of a boat ramp down at the Georgetown Park. I would also like to get the Commissioners to agree to us reaching out to DOT and asking them, "Is the property available just this side of Dunn's Creek?"
Mm-hmm.
We talked to them last, a couple of years ago about possibly putting a boat ramp in during the, the construction of that bridge, but they basically bluntly came back and said, "We don't build boat ramps." So they needed this piece of property that they have there in order for laydown and construction and what have you. So I'm, I would like the authorization to have staff reach out to DOT and possibly other Commissioners if they want to, to find out now that that bridge is complete on construction, would they be interested in turning that three, three and a half or so acres of land on that side that the canal butts into to turn into a boat ramp uh for east, for the East Palac area. Uh, it would give us three and a half acres, obviously, of parking and and facilities and what have you. So um, I would like permission if the, if the Commission doesn't mind for staff to reach out and see if that's even an option or not.
I think that's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, um, the other thing is, and I'm not being critical, so don't take it like that because I think Rich was gone for a while and then uh Mr. Tilton was gone for a while. And so could we try and make it a priority to get together or have a conference call or something and discuss the agreement that we wanna make over the gasification thing at the landfill? If it works out, the next step was to try to come up with an agreement. Uh, and I think uh Mr. Tilton actually has the, the nuts and bolts of it jotted down to where we can make sure that gets in. But it's way above he and I's pay grade. That's gonna have to be you, Rich, so. So if we could get that moving, that'd be wonderful. And that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turner. Yeah, we're gonna meet with the University of Florida with their, uh, two of their staff that's been working with Parks Recreation uh about a new um management plan for um, and comprehensive plan for the Georgetown Park. We'll meet uh Wednesday, the twentieth, at one thirty. So we'll definitely have an update at our next uh county commission meeting on that particular project, so.
Even if something happened that that one did go forward, that DOT would participate with us, it may be that we could try to come up with a long-term plan that maybe get that to be our next one perhaps.
Right, exactly.
Or if it was gonna take two or three more years of changes and mitigation and what have you in Georgetown, then we make it, go ahead and get it done quicker in these, but I don't know. It's just that I think that's the next step, I believe.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do wanna say Town of Interlaken, July fourth was a great event. Hot, but we had a lot of people there and a lot of uh political, a lot of people kicked off their political seasons and it was a really good time. Sheriff had a new outfit that I really admired quite off, quite frequently, and we talked about that this morning. Our own Matt Reynolds came out and was um involved in the Battle of the Barrels. And our famous reporter, Sarah, even took an opportunity to squirt, almost squirt people with the water hose. She missed them a little bit, but uh, the kids had a great time playing in the spray and it's just a wonderful event out there and had a really packed firework. Uh, the, the town was just covered with people. Uh, so we're gonna have to work on that next year. But it was a really, really great event. It was hot, but people made it through and no injuries, so that was a good thing. On the next thing, Rotary Clubs, the three Rotary, there's four Rotary Clubs in the county. Three of them participated in the dental trailer uh refurbishment. That kinda debuted at July fourth and that dental trailer will be used by the Department of Health. It will have Putnam County logo on it along with the Rotary Club and the Department of Health. It will be going out in the community, to schools, to festivals, and to be treating uh young people's teeth. So it made its debut. It still has a little bit more work to do. But hopefully, in the next two to three weeks, we'll be passing that off back over to the State of Florida Department of Health and they're excited about it. And uh, yes, it went over budget, but we're working on a fix for that, so that's not a big deal. But it is really gonna be something that the community can be very proud of and it can serve our, our young people very well. So look forward to that and I'll let you know as soon as we're ready to debut that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. And thank you for all your efforts in the town of Interlaken for, because it's a full day of uh festivities for July fourth. So I know you had a really long day. And I understand that the fireworks in Palaca went well, so, which is always a big show. And uh, so anyway, hopefully, everybody had a good, safe uh Fourth of July. I do wanna thank uh public work staffs. I know we're getting a lot of rain. I know in in District One uh for their efforts of, you know, keeping the, the dirt roads as um passable as possible and um-
It was all equipment now.
Well, we're making, we're making good use of it, so uh, so I do appreciate it. So anyway, that's all I have. Uh, we have a two o'clock workshop. Is there any further business come before this board? Okay, we stand adjourned.